All right, I'm going to be heading to the short work meeting to order for a work session for August 26th. As has been the case, the last meeting in this meeting, we have a mix of people participating via Zoom, people in the room at Middleton Elementary and people watching via live stream. We've tried to work on the sound arrangements a little bit since last week, so hopefully they'll be better, but apologies, they're probably not quite, not quite perfect yet. There will be public comment in tonight's work session, which is unusual, but we also know that there are, there's a lot going on and a lot of information and a lot of topics, and so we do want to provide that it'll be at the conclusion of the meeting after the regular materials, and so you'll have a chance to hear those presentations, and if you want to make comments on that or anything else that is on on your mind, you're able to do that, there is online form for making comment, and if you can get that comment as part of the agenda document, there's a link, and if you can get that to the board secretary Christine Andreg. By the time comments begin, she will read those comments into the record, and they'll still be limited to the three minutes per person, per person time limit. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn things over, we've got a ton of topics tonight, and I'll turn things over right away to Dr. Cordy.
Thank you to the team participating and joining in via Zoom and to our board members and team members here in person. As Chair Allen noted, we've got a really heavy agenda, lots of information to share with the board and conversations to have, and so we have worked internally to try to segment out the number of minutes that we think each topic might need, including discussion, so in true work session, and the team is aware of those things, so we're going to be thinking about those targets, and in true work session format, please jump in with questions, comments all along the way, we will have team members going up who are here, going up to the podium to share the information just in order to maybe help with sound and so forth, but that makes it feel a little bit more formal, but it truly is a work session format. So we are going to, we've got, we've got the elementary principals, special programs leadership, middle school administrative team, high school principal, nutrition services director, and our two associate directors in teaching and learning, joining us via Zoom, and so you might remember that tonight, there's a real focus on sharing through the operational pieces of the work that we've been doing to prepare for reopening, and we also would be remiss to not just come back to you and share some of what we've learned from the feedback after our community forum at each level and in special programs, so every, each of those team members will be sharing that information, some of the work that's happening now in the instructional side of the house and some of the next steps, and some information around professional developments, so it's it's a little mix of both, and I'm real heavy on operations. And we also know that we wanted to loop back around and invited the budget committee members to view during this first part of the meeting to just to talk about where the budget ended up in our history, so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordy. Good evening, board members, Chair Allen, Alvin, Virgil World. As Professor Cordy mentioned, we did invite the budget committee members to join us, so they may be watching live on YouTube. A lot has changed in some respects since we last met and discussed the budget. If we could go to the next slide, please. These are some of the topics we're going to get, but as you recall, we actually passed a budget based on $9 billion in state school fund, we'll expect things to end up with less. So things have changed, but not changed, so it's kind of an interesting year for sure. Speaking of the legislature, we, they met in special session, and they were able to maintain the $9 billion for the state school fund. This is likely, recall, is the amount we budgeted for. The other funding amounts included 1.284 million for measure 98. For this student investment account, we have been using an estimated allocation of 3.887 million. We previously allocated about 1.2 million in general fund expenditures to the SIA dollars to kind of backfill, and that was permissible under the SIA rules. We ended up getting about 25% of the SIA, excuse me, that was about 25% of the original SIA allocation. And while we hoped to hire a number of new people with the additional SIA money, and obviously we can't because the SIA allocation came in about a third of what we planned, and so it allows us to cover that backfill and essentially the green room IAs, sorry, next slide. But it does allow us to, again, cover that backfill and fund our SIA green room instructional aids. Thank you. The state has created a comprehensive distance learning grant with just over $20 million available. Funding can come in one of, or can be used in any combination of five categories that include access connectivity, student and teacher devices, digital content and curriculum, learning management systems, and professional learning for educators, so all things that this fall we definitely need some additional resources for. But per the CARES Act, the funds have to be shared with private schools, and our estimation is that's about $8,000 of the comprehensive distance learning grant would be available to those groups. Allocation could be based on their share of enrollment, which amounts to about 360 students or 6.5% of the students across what is our district boundaries. However, late last week, there was a federal court injunction putting a halt to the distribution of those dollars to private schools, and so we're waiting for further guidance until we make those allocations. And there's some disagreement as to what's the method that we have to use to do that, and that's what's sitting before the federal court at this moment. Next slide, please. And I'm just going to work through a number of topics, Morris. This PERS slide was taken from a presentation given by Steve Rodeman, the former executive director of PERS, and it may be the most easy explanation of PERS funding that I have seen, and it illustrates that the contributions or the mechanism that PERS board has to make the formula work. So meanwhile, benefits are set by the legislature, and earnings are managed by the Oregon Investment Council, and ultimately, those are being determined by the markets, so if earnings are down, contributions and therefore rates must be increased to fund it to save benefits. So the one piece that the first board can really work with is how much are we as a district putting into the system to make that equation balance? And this equation highlights the dilemma of having a good earnings period followed by a period of poor earnings. Result of good earnings is a reduction in rates and therefore a reduction in contributions for future periods. Poor earnings reduce the funds available to provide benefits, and the only way to make this up then is to increase the contributions using higher rates, so it's a tricky, tricky mechanism that they have to work through. It can be problematic, frankly, for our district as those rates go up and down. Next slide, please. While the possibility of lower rates is exciting news, which is what we are hearing for 2021, 2013, or 2023, excuse me. In 2019, the stock market boomed, and that's when our rates were, that's the year they were using to adjust our rates, but it has fallen in 2020, and depending on who you listen to in the economic forecast for the next few years, it may be great. It essentially sets up a situation where a public agency are paying less than the fund while its value is stagnating, and it needs higher payments and increasing the unfunded liability. The rate reduction in 2019 also relies on Senate Bill 1049 from the 2019 legislative session that contained PERS reforms, and recently, the Oregon Supreme Court denied challenges to that law, and so those rates, those rate reductions, excuse me, will remain in effect, so that's good news for all of us. Next slide, it's federally. There were high hopes for a quick resolution to the next stimulus bill when the Senate returned to sessions for the summer break. By all accounts, leadership in both Republican-led Senate and Democrat-led House were ready to strike a deal to bring much needed relief to Americans, both sides openly supported another round of stimulus checks, extended unemployment benefits, and small business relief. However, they disagreed about the levels of support needed for each of those measures, and they disagreed with other topics such as providing sensitive financial aid to state and local governments. They were not in agreement, as you can probably note, to come to an agreement, so President Trump took matters in his own hands and signed three presidential memorandums and an executive order that would provide a smaller unemployment insurance benefit, a payroll tax holiday, and student loan relief. And asked the Department of Health and Human Services and the CDC to consider implementing another eviction warrant. And it's yet to be known exactly how these presidential memorandums and their executive order would be implemented, or how they will impact negotiations on the next stimulus bill. So the picture out of Washington DC is not clear yet as to what they might do that could help us as a district and any future funding for us. So let's talk a little bit about enrollment, because you all know it's really one of the key drivers to our entire budget. The enrollment act July 30th of this year was just shy of 4,000 DHA students. The average change between July and October 1, which as you recall is the day the state takes our kind of annual membership count, for the last four years has been about 97 students, that's an increase of 97 students, which theoretically would give us an expected enrollment on 10-1 this year of 4,892. As you might recall, we built our budget on 5,018 students, so that's quite a bit fewer. The difference is about 126 or 2.5% of our ADM. Fortunately for us, the state school fund allocation uses the larger of the current or previous year's ADM, and so we will still get last year's allocation of 5,031. As you also probably recall, we increased the inter-district transfers into the high school, allowing up to 45 to date, there have been 19 approved. These are students that were approved both by the school district and have released, have a release from their previous district. And I know Gary has commented about enrollment, so I'm going to pause a moment and let him add a little bit.
And while you guys are making that transition, just a reminder, everybody just really use your really strong voices and speak really clearly, so folks in Zoom land and beyond can hear.
Thank you, Dr. Cordy. Just wanted to bring the board up to scale a little bit on sort of what's happening with enrollment in the district and what we're seeing. I don't think it may be a surprise to you, the reason that number is down is really there's a few different factors going. One, we're just seeing districts across the map are seeing these things as well, seeing students enroll in virtual online charter schools, just virtual charter schools. I think that's a common trend we're seeing, we're seeing some families, particularly at the elementary level, who are choosing to homeschool their students. But we discussed an updated data from TSC today across Northwest regional region, and I think they said, if I remember, enrollment of 262% of homeschooling across the region. We're not seeing that big of an increase in enrollment, but that is certainly a trend right now with pandemic. And then the other thing we're seeing is just kindergarten preferment, where kids are just not coming to kindergarten at the same numbers. I think all these things can be anticipated. I just want to bring up speed on that, so there's risks and benefits to that, honestly. I think the risk is that, oh, in a perfect world, this kindergarten bubble flows into our schools next year, and we have this class, this valley that goes all the way through 13 years. All the charter schools and all the online charter schools, multiple kids come back to us, and our golden bros back to where it wasn't before. The risk is that for some reason that doesn't happen. We are feeling hearing from our families that they're not leaving because of the distance grant, this is ethical. But what I hear when I talk to preschoolers, when I talk to tech staff, and their people at school, it's, it's not that they don't love the schools here, and they'll come back, it's just that homeschooling, for example, was better for their family in this crisis, because it's easier to say they're always getting more parents, and families, and whatever that's working on. But there is some risk there, that our ADM E goes down, because our ADM E this year is 5,031, if that drops down lower, that would be a different thing. The benefit is, is we're trying to pay kids on campus, and we're trying to fit our K3 kids, if fewer kids, we have the same number of staffs, but at the odds, and so there's certainly some benefits around density there that will help us out. And I just wanted to bring it kind of to speed on how that all fits together, teaching and learning budget connection, and how that sort of plays out with enrollment. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Gary. Go ahead, Eric.
So there was something that we did mention was some of the slowdown in construction, which I'm assuming is kind of happening in the house. Do we see that as, I know data, data is demographic, this kind of predicts when different areas are going to be having more housing in, and we're looking to change in that situation from where we have these initial numbers.
I think so, I'm going to get the teaching and learning side of what happens with kids rerolling, so I know this time I know.
When did the, when did the first step out? Schools within contact, they, they sort of took it there after and asked them what they thought of this might impact enrollment on the long term, but he made the comment, he said that he can probably make a case both, both ways, that people might pull out for a little bit, that the student might come back, so they're going to take, it's going to take them a little bit of time, the sort of, I'm hoping to see that, so if we, we just got their invoice for their retainers, so we will engage them, so we can look at it, work on it, video those.
Senator, I think your question is also directly related to, are we going to see houses on Brooklyn?
Yes.
And the conversations I've had with the city recently, and the number of documents I get with some other mail, of new builds, I don't think it's slipped down much. I think they still expect homes to start building in next summer. At least the planning behind this seems to continue to do that. How's long out this pandemic plays and what that ultimately means, I don't know. But at least what I've seen so far across my desk, it looks like we can expect homes there in the next 12 to 18 months.
Okay, thank you. I can never tell until that school happens.
And that's honestly, that's kind of what we're all waiting, is we're waiting to see ground broken, because that would tell us, oh, they're coming. Because we've thought, and there's a number of projects around town that we thought for years were going to happen, and it didn't, so we'll have to wait and see to some extent, but fingers crossed, we start getting some homes there and additional student count from that, for the thing is.
Well, I've seen Brooklyn's going, the whole ground is going, that's started, that's all been cut, that much of that, I don't think they've cut everything. And houses and things currently right now are not even going up for sale officially before they're sold, and these are families, so I think we actually may see an interesting anomaly of people getting here right now to be here in the long run. So, you know, it's a little bit different, but you got Brooklyn, even on Brooklyn, there, there's all for it, it's, it's been cut up here, and construction hasn't stopped for it.
I just have to admit, I haven't driven out Brooklyn in a bit. I have about five minutes left that I need to get through, a couple more items, and fill people with time for discussion, so if you don't mind, I'm going to keep cranking forward. I want to talk a little bit about the impact of work share, because that was such an important issue to us last spring. We saved about $590,000, but we know that number is likely to come down, as we have some staff who did qualify and others who have not received all of their checks, and so we're going to have to, over time, figure out what that amount is, and make sure that we keep everybody whole, or make sure no one's harmed by that project, so that will take a bit of time to work out over the next few months. I'm going to move on to changes in spend pattern, so Phil did a great job, Morris, and did some analysis of last spring's expenditures versus the previous years, and really looked at what accounts had expenditures go down by more than $10,000, and you can see those here. That was for the 1920 school year. As you would expect, substitute, extra duty, and overtime decreased while we were closed. The substitute overhead represents payroll taxes on substitutes, so that's why you see substitute there twice. In total, that's about $163,000, so when we talk about what did we save by being closed, that's kind of the number we're looking at. At the same time, we really had no accounts that grew by more than $10,000 in expenditures. So that's kind of a true savings for us there. Move on to the next slide, then. The exception to that is we did have, and we are tracking some COVID-related costs last spring. Those were things that included cleaning supplies, hand sanitizers, space coverings, shields, all of that kind of work. The $38,000 figure you see there does not include CSO, that's a local management system, it doesn't include Zoom or other kind of fall expenditures that are either currently being done or planned for. And we will, we know we will have increased costs directly related to COVID, and we will continue to track those separately also, so that way we can keep keep in mind what we're spending this year. I'll move on to just a couple more slides. We've had lots of discussions over the years about our estimated reserves at the end of the year, and are targeted five to, really, we want 10%. We've had this sneak down closer to five over a number of those years. These are the projections that Phil has helped us put together, so at the end of this current year, we expect to be at about 7.22%, and then for 2021, 22, we expect that to drop to 6.2%, and that's based on the annual projections that we use looking years out in kind of our current spending plan. Of course, the wild card for all of us in that is our ADM enrollment, so we'll have to continue to watch that as well. And then I'll mention one last thing, which is just, when, related to the September forecast, the state did use to make about about 400 million in education stability fund to help keep us at that four, or excuse me, the $9 billion amount. We expect they may use some of the remaining in 21, 23, the 21, 23 by any event, that is down. We've not heard any estimates yet for the September forecast. As we know, the Oregon economy tends to lag behind the national economy, so we're kind of waiting to see what those next set of projections will look like. And with that, that is your fairly brief budget update, that looks different than what we thought in Jim's.
So one thing that I got from the materials is that some of the COVID costs, there's still, you know, estimated costs on the screening and contact tracing, some of that's still unknown exactly what the price tag, where that's going to be. Will we be able to use some of the comprehensive distance learning grants for that, or is that just for devices and things of that nature? And is that money already allocated?
Or? I'll start at the beginning, no, the money's not allocated yet, they haven't decided how yet to send it to dollars. I think we have, there are different tiers that we can send in, and we're going to have to look at those versus other needs. It's hard to say how we send it, but we have all of those needs that we're going to find ways to fund, so whether that's specifically the CCL dollars or some other source, we're going to continue to look.
One other follow-up, and so we mentioned the student investment account. When we went where the money came in and we're able to fund IA positions for the green rooms, and it sounds like that's it, right? Everything else that we planned is out, including the dual language training, right?
What's out are the expenditures that maybe we would call the new investments, I want to hear, you're going to speak more appropriately to that, I want to make sure we're very clear. We had the 1.2 million roughly that we were using to cover some general fund position, that is covered plus the IAs, but the stuff beyond that is a part that's been, we're not able to cover right now, but I want to hear.
To do a language program, it's still launching, I think it's hard to say.
Oh, it is still launching, okay. When I read that, I was thinking that something to change there, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? None.
Okay, thank you, Jim. So while Gary goes up to the podium, we will be transitioning to the district level teaching and learning updates, and this is the most brief part of our instructional updates, something like that, Gary, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cordy, for the records. Take this off, we wear it so much, I can't even notice I'm wearing it, it's kind of down. So the first, I just wanted to talk to you briefly about the operational blueprints, we included those in the packet for your review, I believe there's a paper copy in front of you. We'll talk about some of the aspects of things included in those blueprints tonight in our operations updates. We'll send those as they are to the local public health authority and get their feedback, and we'll post them to our website prior to starting personal learning. If you have any questions about what you find in those documents, just be sure to reach out to us and let us know, they're sort of detailed, tedious and important pieces of work to be included for you. In terms of the cloud campus registration, we had about 860 kids register initially for the cloud campus, which was a little bit bigger number than we anticipated. We've had a few of those unregistered, either because they changed their mind or because they registered by accident, about 40 even come out. We have a few students in there who registered who aren't currently enrolled in our district, maybe not that was the registrations or in the process of reaching out to them, and we're working to confirm with families that they're in and make sure that's what they want to be, and so that was a bigger number than we expected, it doesn't have much impact at the secondary level, because they're in the same classes with their peers. At the elementary level, things just worked out pretty well, we were able to assign teachers to those classes, and the numbers actually panned out sort of as evenly as you could draw it out, yes?
Do you have a breakdown for how many high school and middle school admissions? That's a huge number.
I don't have it in front of me, but it was roughly even. The lower numbers were on both ends of the scale, and that there were fewer kinders than 5, 4, 5, 6, 7, and I think there were fewer seniors, but it was relatively even.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak a little bit more of this, it's what I, when we talk about staffing, the element, because I'm a student, I have two cloud classrooms per grade.
That's two. Wow.
Two per grade. Two. Team, or, I'm shocked by the number.
I was surprised by the numbers as well, I anticipated the lower number than that based on what other districts around us have seen. And that's, that's where we sit today, if you have them. So, and it is interesting, there's a lot of questions we've received about moving in and out of the cloud campus and what that looks like, and I suppose there are some risks there for us in that if, when we moved in person instruction, a lot of people wish to go online, that might prove challenging, because we would have to accommodate that, and we might have to make some adjustments in teaching staff and things like that, but all in all, it worked out thus far from a numbers perspective, as well as we could have anticipated. Good news. Just limited in-person instruction, any more questions on that, I'm sorry, I don't want. Limited in-person seating, kids seating, learning, should be wearing my glasses right now. I guess they'll be seated. What we know about that plan thus far, and that's the opportunity to bring in kids that we have no bases in the school community for 14 days, and what we know is that we need to start with assessments, we'll start with our ELPA screener, which is our English language proficiency assessment, dyslexia assessments, special education evaluations, some from last spring and new ones this fall, fifth grade math advancements, lots of others, we know we can start with that, those are required, I think it will also allow us to get some systems up in place and checked out before we bring more kids in, we'll then move on to supporting students in person for instruction. We're still working on what that looks like, we had some further conversations about that this morning in our administrative meeting, where we got some input from administrators to change our thinking a little bit on it, which is a good thing. What we know is it needs to be supplemental in nature, can't be in core curriculum, and it can't be based on a student group or category, like you can't say we're going to bring in all students with disabilities, something like that, it needs to be based on other factors, and we also know the demand is going to far exceed the supply of what we can offer, given co-boarding and metrics and numbers, and so we'll have to be very careful about how we prioritize who comes in and how we think really carefully about that, so that we're serving the kids in a way that makes the most sense, given the resources we have to do it. All of that said, really excited, I think it's a great opportunity, we're excited for that part of the guidance to come out, I think we'll really be able to help some kids and families out with that, and we'll keep it posted as we develop that plan further and further. The last piece is just an update on the metrics. At the end of last week, as of the end of last week, the metrics I'm referring to are the metrics sent forth by the governor for the return to school, for their state and county metrics. As of the end of last week, the state was still slightly above 5%. As of the end of last week, the state was still slightly above the 5% positivity rate for students to return to school, but it's moving down closer to 5%. You might also remember that in addition to the state metric, we have two county metrics we have to meet. Grades K through three to return to school, we need to have 30 cases or fewer per 100,000 people and a test positivity rate below 5%. Washington County, over the last four weeks, the percentages have gone up 54, 43, 41, and 34 in the most recent week. So we are making solid progress towards hitting that 30% number. And if that trend continues, we could hit that metric for the first time as soon as next week. Test positivity rate has also been less than 5% for the last two weeks in Washington County. That's good news on that front in terms of our ability to bring our youngest kids back into schools. You might recall for grades four through 12, we need to get to 10 cases for 100,000 people, so we have ways to go for that. But we've taken in four weeks, we've gone from 54 to 34, so that's a significant jump into some good progress.
Gary, question?
Yeah.
How, if that metric continues to drop, and of course it's going to be at that rate for three weeks, so we're at a minimum three weeks away from being able to meet the K3 metric, how quickly could we then introduce hybrid learning at that level? Or would we expect, you know, we've talked about doing hybrid through the end of the first, or I mean, distance learning through the end of the first quarter. Would we stick with that if we met that K3 metric, or would we be able to quickly pivot?
We've talked about trying to ramp up as quickly as possible to be able to offer the in-person learning for our K3 kids. So what we've talked with our teachers about that looks like is we will start communicating with them as we hit that metric for the first time, that hey, we did it for the first time, keep communicating. And if we hit it for three weeks in a row, that data is coming out on Tuesdays, that official data, I've seen it. We would then even let people know, and then there would be some transition period because we'll have to train teachers to, we'll have to have time for teachers to set up their classroom and train them in safety protocols. Things like adding a fire drill will look radically different in this environment than it does in a normal environment. And so there will be a transition time. Heather, do you have anything to add to that? Dr. Cordy, does you have anything to add to that?
I just wanted to tag on to that, that as we're conducting listening sessions this week with staff, voluntary, but yesterday we met with all elementary and middle school staff. And this is definitely a common theme, is what is that, what is that going to look like? And, you know, making sure that it's not, we're C D L on Friday and then expected to do, you know, in person and have some hybrid on Monday. And we are assuring our staff that that is certainly not the case. And then this ramp up is described, knowing that lots of communication will happen all along the way and that we realize there, you know, there needs to be professional development and training, all the pieces that Gary was talking about. So I just wanted to really recognize that that's a worry, understandably that our staff has, especially since we messaged early on, nine weeks, and we'll keep an eye on the metrics. You know, there are districts around us that have said nine weeks, no matter what. But we really try to explain that even when we get to that point, sure, Alan, there's a ramp up that has to happen.
That ramp up needs to be a couple of weeks at minimum. It's just so things you listen to and take time to do all the training and get everything set up. I mean, you know, we'll have to set those expectations, I guess.
We haven't set a timeline for the ramp up yet. We haven't gotten that detailed yet, but it will, I, and I don't want to comment on the timeline, and I have to look at the paper to it, but it will, it will take some time. And it will take time without students in school. I mean, we're going to need to have time where the students aren't in comprehensive distance learning and teachers and principals aren't free to learn. That's what we mean by a ramp up. That's, there's going down to be some period there, it's just not going to be possible to teach all day and trade on, trade in with evening.
With that, I trust you all to figure out, along with our association leaders, what's going to be necessary to make it work on the ground, just communicating as well as I know is in the plan with the parents so that, because for the same reasons, if you've got kids, then you've got a plan in place. It's going to take a little bit of time to figure out, okay, well, if I've got my kindergarten in school for three hours a day, but then how do we get them home and how do we get them settled? And so all of those things too, I know are on our list, but making sure that we communicate with parents about whenever we figure out that timeline is, how that's going to work so that they have an equal amount of time to start figuring out, how do I change my kindergarten?
For sure.
For sure. I think the feedback that I've received is just liking the ramp up and not immediate switch, and anxiety seems to come down when we talk about the plan in that way. And that heads are nodding in the forums rather than looks of concern. Does that make sense?
I think that's right. I think the flexibility is the watchword for the fall. So I know if somebody was listening, wanted to.
Thank you.
So when we look at the county level numbers, our district spans multiple counties. It was slippery again, though. We have a little bit in Clackamas County, but are we only tied to Washington County numbers because all of our schools are physically located in Washington County and the vast majority of our students live in Washington County? Or is there any, or do we have to look at Clackamas County numbers for any reason at all?
We still have a little bit of work to do on some of the details around what are the metrics. I mean, there's one about how much your staff, there's a different counting, which people talk about later on as well. And so there's some language around, should consider the guidance versus the bus, and what the guidance, so clarifying that is more to be careful.
I can speak a little bit. That language was intentionally vague to try to not have to game out every single Yam Hill County versus Clackamas County situation across 190-some school districts. And so I think we have a lot of latitude for how we would interpret that.
Three counties in which we're situated, Washington County has the highest number of cases and percentage, so. We're in good shape.
Thank you, their clarification director. I would appreciate that. It's good to know. Other questions?
Just one other observation, if I could. The ramp up is important, and I like the fact that what we're basically planning on doing, if I understand it right, is to start the ramp up at the first week that Washington County meets that metric, to be able to be at the position at the end of those three weeks to have completed ramp up. The observation I would make is, the system is designed for both that metric and for the K12 metric to basically let you in and then not, you know, it's not like a bright line, and if you fall back across the line, you're back out again. It's intended to let you in and then have a, have a long run back to what would cause you to be back to distance learning. But the converse challenge is, let's say we go, you know, 25, 25, 40 in the case count. Well, that sets us back to a whole nother three-week waiting period. So I would think that that would cause us to want to err on the side of, let's get ramped up and be ready to go in as soon as we can, so that we're in that snapback kind of a area, not at risk of getting setback because the county's case counts went up again, if that makes sense.
Can I ask a clarifying question then? So if we hit three weeks in a row and don't ramp up, it starts before the fourth week comes back higher than 30%, then we would reset the three-week window?
Yep.
I didn't understand that. Okay. What if we, what if we make an announcement that we're starting and we just haven't had kids in school yet? Is that, we have to have kids in seats?
How many angels can dance on the head of this pin, huh? Unclear about that.
I'm uncomfortable with that, Pat. If we're that close that we pop back in in week four, because we've been sitting at 4.9 for three weeks and then we're back over at 5.1, we still have a positivity problem that can result in case counts in our school that we should be concerned about. I just, I think we need to be a little more humble about this than that. I just, I, just because we jumped in and then we're up again and we're up for three weeks, but we were then able to, we're able to get three weeks and then we tip over, I just, I'm real nervous about that. I don't, I don't know that that's puts us in a position of ensuring that we don't have kids and families feeling exposed or teachers feeling exposed or our bus drivers feeling exposed because the overall positivity rate just went up, but we got them right and under the, under the wire so that we can operate for a while. I just, I must be nervous.
Yeah, what makes me feel better about that is that the snapback metric in K3 will be school district specific. And so, and so if, if we in fact are seeing cases in Sherwood, that would cause us to be back into distance learning, but based on the metrics for that, at that district level. And, and that way we wouldn't be driven by what's going on across the entire county, which after all is pretty big.
Right, but we've got people living all over the county. We've got people living in other counties that are both exposed to our kids and our kids are exposed to them in these environments. I think, I just, I just think we need to be broken.
And, you know, if we were talking about the K12 metric, I think I would be there with you. My heart breaks every time I think about kindergartners in their first year of school trying to do this via distance learning. And so I guess I'm, I really passionately want to err on the side of, within the rules and within the, within the structures and systems we have, getting those K through three kids into in-person learning at the earliest opportunity.
I hear you. I'm worried about making sure that when they come into learning, we're able to hold in that pattern for quite a while and that we're not exposing their teachers, the IA's, the bus drivers, in a way that is counterproductive. So I just, there's a fine line there and I, I don't know that announcing, getting a data point on a Tuesday and then jumping back into in-person learning on Monday, the following Monday, whether our teachers are going to be able to adjust their own family lives, be able to do that, whether our families are going to be ready for that. I just, I think we need to do some more work on that front before we just assume, well, once we've hit it once, then we plan to be in in three weeks, because that may not be realistic. Especially if they need additional P D in the building before we open.
I would have questions about finding out on Tuesday if we were able to do distance learning and being able to do that month to month. I would, I would, I would be concerned about that short-term requirement. Just from, just from our ramping up standpoint from our staff, thank you for my preparation. We haven't talked about it, but that would be a challenge, I think, for my perspective without having to, you know, protect it from others.
Yeah, it's got to be, it's got to be a couple of weeks.
Let's speak only to the transition, not to whether or not we should open or not. It's just like the logistics of, that he said, go to kids in school.
Well, but let's say that this coming Tuesday, we see that Washington County has entered the, the zone of being under 30, right? What would keep us from say, saying to staff and patrons and everyone else and parents that we're in the beginning of a window, that if it continues at this rate for three weeks, we will be able to open on such and such a date for, for hybrid learning for K through three. And then the following week, say, we've, we're now two weeks into the window and if things stay the same, a week from now we'll be able, and so you're able to give people kind of a running notice. Now, if it takes longer than three weeks to ramp up, I'm totally fine with, that needs to take what it needs to take. But I don't think we need to be in a position where we say, on Tuesday, school starts on Monday, and that's the first anybody's ever heard of it. I think we can manage it more, more artfully than that.
I would concur. And our plan is to communicate just as you discussed, that my concern was in three days to prepare, just sort of technically within, we need to have more conversation.
Yeah, but our team has, you know, speculating about what that can look like, and we have so much more work to do on that front, I think. And of course, engaging with board, you know, in those conversations all along the way. But I think, I think a lot of this is premature on our part because we haven't really delved deeply into what that plan looks like. What we know is we would never ask families and staff to make knee-jerk changes, if you will. But beyond that, you know, we can, we speculate about what that can look like, but we have a lot of work to do.
Well, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it seems to me that there's going to be two ramp ups. There's going to be a ramp up to the start of the year with the comprehensive distance learning. And then if the numbers look good, a ramp up to hybrid. And those two ramp ups can't be happening at the same time. So I mean, I think the expectation, even if the numbers look good, the expectation for parents should be that we are, you know, we're starting with comprehensive distance learning and it's going to lead out for the first few weeks, because we have to get ramped up to that. You know, the teachers, this is a new way for, this is different from what we did in the spring, and the teachers need a few weeks to get that system down, not in the bells. And it can't be ramped up to hybrid at the same time that they're, they're learning C D L.
Can I just, I agree. I think I understand what Pat's saying, is that when we hit that number, let's talk about it. Let's not just set it in arbitrary dates. Let's move forward. Let's say, hey, we're here. Okay, next week, we'll see what happens. Next week, let's, let's just talk about it. I don't have a, whatever the ramp up looks like, that's what it looks like, but let's communicate it so that we're not just setting these arbitrary dates where it sort of feels like we're just not going to worry about that until everything ends. And we have to forge a path forward, and I think it makes sense when we're there in Washington County, let's just start talking about it, what that looks like, that's what it's going to look like. Like just to have a plan that, that feels like there's some control and we're moving forward, I think is really important. I think it's, it's also why 860 families or children are doing the cloud, because they control that. I mean, I think we're all a little tired and not sort of seeing some progress. And I think, I think to have that, to sort of feel like, okay, we're going to move forward, this is going to be great. And if it doesn't move forward, it doesn't move forward. But just, just to communicate that and not feel like we're just going to kick everything down the road. So I, I want, I want those little guys in here as soon as it's safe for everyone.
Sure. I don't, and I completely agree with that, Sue. I just think it's really important that when we bring them in, that we bring them in because we can see and continue to grow the down, not that we're just hovering and then we tip over and then we're, then we're on our watch list to get back to the place where we send them back home. I think consistency is going to be really important. And I know that there's, that there is, when that kicks back in, that's a little bit different. Pat, I totally get that. I'm just saying, I think we need to be real thoughtful about how we do that so that we're, that everyone's feeling safe and we're not just rushing to get people in to get them in. I trust that this is, this is not, does not like in-person learning, but I also trust that our teachers are going to be able to deliver content in a way that's going to get through and that as much as we can avoid the disruption of in and out of school, all the better for our students so that it's consistent.
Thank you. Good discussion. Thank you.
And there'll be more discussion to come on that as we get closer, for sure. So Mr. Bell and, and Mr. Bell, we'll be talking, Jim, we'll be talking about operations, various elements within that. Someone hand it off to you then.
All right. Good evening. I just wanted to share with you some of the steps we've been taking to try and create as safe a environment as possible for our students and staff, and to get our staff there now as they come back. And the first one is we've been upgrading our filters. We use MERV 8 in the past, which is what most school districts use. It's the lowest threshold that meets the federal standards for filtering, and we are upgrading to the MERV 13, which is just one step below HEPA filters. We can't go above MERV 13 because none of our units can handle that low filtering and not even all of our ones can handle 13s, but we're trying to really focus on areas where there's a lot of shared air, where it feeds multiple classrooms or multiple R O A and things like that. And it's a gradual equation, so we can't just go in and replace them all, but as, as we replace them, replace them with the MERV 13s. Uh, second thing is we are, uh, we have a pretty sophisticated HVAC system that gives us a lot of ability to control every single unit in a number of ways, fan speed, amount of outside air, those kinds of things. And we are increasing the amount of outside air um, in all of our areas. This is one of the obviously recommended things from CDC and O J. However, it comes at a price and that is temperature. Um, you cannot control temperature. The reason you don't let in outside air is not just so that you can control the temperature. So this is something that we'll have to continually monitor, it's a balance. But we've got to create a, a working environment and eventually a learning environment that is comfortable and safe. And at the same time, try and create as much airflow as possible. We'll be utilizing outside windows, doors whenever possible, those kind of things. This is just a regarding the HVAC. We are providing on all employees with two masks and a face shield. The face shield is one of the recommended ways for teachers to conduct class so that students can see their lips and mouth. And, and, and we create, I, I'm a little bit deaf and so I, I create a lot of understanding about the mask. I really struggle to understand people because they use the lips to just give me a few extra clues. I think that a lot of students will feel that way as well. Uh, we have purchased uh, plexing glass barriers that will be present with any staff entering directly with the public. Being parents or anyone who comes in outside of the front desk, counseling offices, um, bookkeepers, front office of the district office receptionist, those kinds of things. And so they all are large plexed glass barriers that have like a transaction um, window right below that that will help protect them as well and allow them to maybe um, not be as covered up, though probably more face shields as well in there. So it'll, it'll, we think that'll be effective. One of the other things that we're looking at is the use of UV light in some of our areas. There's mixed um, data to support that. There, it definitely helps, there's no question that UV light's helpful. The, the question mark is can you keep the, is the air in the UV lit area long enough to create the benefit? So what we're looking at is doing it in select areas, only areas where one is that the air is in there quite a long time. And two, where it shares like, for example, the ridges, we have HVAC units that feed a whole room. And so in those kinds of ones, they're also large, they have really long travels for the airflow, which gives us a lot of opportunity to use UV light. So, but, um, so that's one of the other areas that we're exploring. Those are back order right now, so we're, we're working and everybody in the world is adding UV light. Uh, next, we are uh, in regards to how we're cleaning, we have a couple of things that we're doing to try and increase uh, safety in regards to cleanliness and sanitization. The first one is we are using backpack sprayers. So we will be asking our teachers to clear all hard surfaces uh, every night that they have. If this is for when they have students, we'll be doing it a little bit differently when it's just staff. And spraying down all those hard surfaces with backpack sprayers, this will allow our custodians to get to everything. Uh, we'll be wiping down touch points and doing a little bit different thing at touch points. This is just basic hard surfaces throughout the building. We'll also be utilizing these on our buses, um, between, um, we'll be wiping down touch points between runs, but we will be sanitizing the bus in its entirety of each day. The second thing is we'll be purchasing a hand trowel system, uh, which is exactly what it sounds like. It's a trowel, a handle that has a clean surface with pads that attach to it. It, it allows staff to clean hard surfaces without touching the surface or the cleaning rag or cleaning material or pad. Um, and so we, we have purchased these so that each of our staff remembers what. This will be particularly useful when we have students in and we're eating in classrooms because we need to be cleaning and sanitizing desks before they eat and after it. So this will allow all the classroom teachers to do that safely and more comfortably. The last thing that I wanted to share with you and get some feedback and thoughts on was we've been looking at a number of things to make our schools safer in regards to COVID nineteen as well as other things. So one of the things we've been looking at is facial recognition software paired with a thermal imaging system. And you know, the thermal imaging and temperatures is becoming less and less of a um, indicator because of all the asymptomatic people out there. Um, and so that is one, one piece of the software. Essentially, this is the way it works is you can put these thermal imaging cameras uh, at your main entrances. It will take, automatically take people's temperature as they come in uh, through the front door. It's facial recognition software, so it would immediately identify Ken Bell as a hundred and four temperature. The facial recognition software then would allow you to do contact tracing of the day. So afterwards, you found out that, that I was uh, positive, you could go back and search. It might not recognize me if I'm wearing a mask, but one of the things with uh, facial recognition software is you could lose a couple of the key points in facial recognition. But it would recognize you, so you could search me by my mask. So if I wore this mask, I'll pay, you could search what I looked like with the mask. It wouldn't identify me by name, but you'd have to identify me anyway, but you could, you could see everywhere in the building that person looked. Um, it also has a notification system, so it can create your notifications that would go to phones or mobile devices. If students were not wearing a mask in the hall, and so it's a, Ken Bell's in call two without a mask. So people could go talk with him, those kinds of things. Uh, it also does things regarding other safety, never mind the pandemic things. It has a weapon recognition, so it has a lot of common weapons plugged into the system and it can recognize those weapons immediately and send alerts to, for people to investigate. It also can do banned person notifications using the facial recognition software. So if you have students who are expelled and that's supposed to be on campus or people have been trespassed from their campus, um, it can recognize that and again, send alerts immediately. It does interface with our existing camera systems, so the thermal imaging cameras are just part of that system. The rest of it ties in with the rest of our, our camera systems, um, and allows us to utilize those. What we wanted to do is talk with you a little bit about this and get your thoughts and feedback around that. About whether this is something we should continue pursuing and looking at or not, kind of just sort of looking for some guidance around that, or at least some, some input towards that. Uh, it is um, about two hundred thousand. It really depends on how we want to implement it, it'll be less than that. There's some, uh, we have some, some feelings that this wouldn't be very effective at an elementary level. We're not gonna bring kids all like one entrance anyway, or multi, even multiple entrances. They're gonna come straight into classrooms and stuff over schools. And we have other ways to, to conduct this screening if we need to. Um, and we've also been worried about some of those other safety things at those levels. So it depends on what, how you're going to implement it at your school, it would be different. So middle and high school would be a little bit different than elementary. It depends how many cameras you do, how many ones I have in your system. So I would say implemented district wide, if I don't want to be about two hundred thousand, two twenty one minutes.
So, yeah, I have to, I'd have to ponder sort of the, the topic of facial recognition and all the other things that you talked about not related to COVID. I would say in terms of the temperature sensing portion, fever is the number seven symptom in Oregon for people with COVID. Um, and so it's not, it's not super common. Um, uh, and that's assuming people aren't taking fever reducers to, to mask it. And temperature sensing as, just as a technology, is pretty terrible in terms of its effectiveness at picking up what fever there is. So I certainly wouldn't suggest doing this as a COVID thing. It, it may be there are a bunch of other things and if the temperature sensing is free, it certainly doesn't hurt anything. Uh, but like I said, I'd have to, I'd have to ponder more about the, the, the other aspects that you've talked about.
So actually I had a probably too nerdy question. They mentioned the spatial recognition, which is fine, I think that's pretty trivial to do to identify people's faces and pictures. But you also mentioned that it would be able to recognize and identify certain people, which implies that we have a database of trained photos of, would it just be the adults or would it be all the students? Or how does it identify who those people are and learn over time? And also are those images, I'm assuming it's not done in the camera at that point, and that's going to be fairly compute intensive that do all those images get uploaded to the cloud and we have any control over those images and videos and get set there?
We do have control of images, we see like there's, there are school photos, which we already have in our system. And it would just, we would just be cross sharing that data. It'd be our system, we, we purchase it, um, so we wouldn't be uploading it into theirs.
So all the, all the compute power is already on our machines?
Yes, in our service. So we, we, our tech, creative strategy department has already made it from to see what the technology requirements would be. It's affordable, we could do this, it could be something for hundreds of people.
My question, what, what type of manpower would this take to monitor and you have to have, and you question updates to all of this? And it just seems like it would really, time consuming, that you'd have to hire an F T E. Do we all have that one look like?
I don't, you would just be getting notifications um, to your phone. And there's uh, there's a lot of other systems that do this as well, which means when the door is ajar, it's like that, you can see a phone notification. So you could have everything for supervisor, administrator, or anybody who is on duty, have that set up on the phone to get notifications. And you can also, the, the system has, I, I have shared like, some of those features they have, a lot of features we could use, all of them, not some of them. And there's, there's a lot of variety. We felt like there's two times, and so if we had two notifications, we could change the threshold, we could turn that feature off. There, there could be a lot of things.
Is this something that you want to undertake?
That, that I want to undertake?
Yeah, I mean, I mean honestly, if we're not using this right now for, for temperatures, it's not appropriate. I mean, is this the time that we want to do this? Is there another value minute to, to, to forge in right now would be my question.
Um, I think uh, in, in some ways, I think we're going to do it now is a good time because while we don't have students in our schools, it would be a great time to do installation uh, of something like this and working on the interface. However, um, I, I do think it's costly. I think it has value at the middle school and high school level regardless of the thermal imaging system. I think the safety features around the system. Uh, as a former high school principal, I can tell you that uh, I would love to know that there are people on campus who were expelled and threatened staff members have done those kinds of things. We had numerous times where we had to share photographs of anybody who had outside doors and stuff in case certain people showed up, that kind of thing. So I would love to have that be part of it, because I think there's some safety benefits to it, but I also, I, I don't know that the thermal imaging part is, for me, isn't a motivating factor. If we did it, I think it'd be more from the safety aspect than it would be from that. That could, it potentially just be a, aside of.
Yeah, I, I, I have some questions about privacy and ensuring privacy about this, that I feel nervous about that. So I, um, if, if this isn't gonna be something we're ready for COVID, I, I've got real um, questions about trying to tack it to temperature. Frankly, we're likely to catch kids with flu, which is, you know, a good thing, but then you set off a whole thing about, well, does Ben have flu or does he have COVID and he's setting a temperature and forgot to take the I D bill to bring it down? I mean, those are conversations, I think we, um, but whether to do this or not to do this feels like a longer conversation and I've got some privacy questions.
I have one more brief update for you, uh, related to childcare for staff. We recently conducted an all-staff survey regarding childcare needs. We had about fifty respondents. Of those twenty indicated that they might use Champion's, um, which is housed at one of our locations, representing about twenty-nine students. And we're working with Champion's to license the um, portable unit, the portable uh, classrooms there in Adams Field, so they could have kind of a centralized hub where they can maintain cohorts they need to in the distance if they need to, but have them kind of centralized. So, um, working on that event. One, a couple of points I want to make though is we've had nearby districts that have requested uh, preference treatment for their staff with childcare providers. Uh, we have not done this for a couple of reasons. One, it could become a taxable benefit for those folks. And then um, secondly, just concerned of whether or not it runs afoul of state ethics rules. Champion's does offer a administrator, excuse me, an educator discount, but they also do similar discounts for first responders, um, large companies like Intel and those kinds of things. So our staff are more than welcome to take advantage of that discount and maybe not run afoul of state ethics rules. So that's um, a nice benefit that uh, Champion's directly gives them. Um, I also shared with staff uh, that indicated they needed the childcare information about the employment-related daycare program or the E R D C as it's called. And it helps eligible low-income families pay for childcare while they are working. Uh, E R E C is a subsidy program, meaning eligible families still pay part of their childcare cost. This is information that again, I shared with um, the staff that indicated they need help with this. It's also information that we need to share more widely as well and working on that as well.
Thanks, Jim, Ken. Okay, um, now we are going to uh, turn it over to Ms. Garrett for our um, high school updates.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here tonight. Um, I'm just gonna jump right in and give you guys an update of where we're at, at the high school level in terms of opening school in just a couple of short weeks. Um, on the screen right now is a graph that might be a little bit hard to see because there's a lot of information on it. But I want to just let you know that what you're looking at is our community feedback. And we opted to put it into a graphic because I think it really tells the story of the complexity of what we're trying to navigate in this current situation. Um, it's broken down, at the top, the green bars are things that we heard from our community that were things that people liked, things that they were in favor of when we presented our instructional model during the community forum. And the bottom half of the graph are things that people were concerned about. And in the very middle of it, you see a line, that's the longest line, that has half green and half red. Um, and it's uh, being with their peers slash teaching at school was a thing that just evenly, almost evenly split down the middle. Some people were really in favor of being at school and really excited about it. And then other people were really concerned about being at school, um, or being with their peers. And so the, the same holds true when you look at the longest green line of the thing that uh, most families and students were the excited about was live or direct instruction. That was something that we got very positive feedback, but conversely, the longest red line on the bottom are the safety and logistics around us being in person. And so, um, it, it, to me, it just really has spoken to just the complexity of what we're all trying to navigate in this time. And that it's, we think that we're moving in the right direction, we feel confident in the direction we're moving, but it is not easy. And there isn't a, a clean answer of yes, this is the perfect way for us to run school. Um, and so that is something that I, we thought that was really important for you guys to see and to hear. Next, please. So in terms of progress updates and where we're at, um, these four bullet points were the things that we addressed as next steps uh, the last time that we had the opportunity to share with you. And so I wanted to just give you an update on what we said we were going to do, so you knew where we were at with those things. Um, first and foremost, we are working to build our schedule and we're getting closer and closer every day. It has been um, an interesting experience. We, I, we have been working with our technology department, um, all hours of the day, trying to figure out how to best make this work so that we can seamlessly transition back into a hybrid model when we meet the metrics. And that has been, um, there's just a lot of moving pieces. And so we're working on that, our counselors are back in the building. And so they have been working to, to try to help us clean up and, and fix the things that aren't working. And we're hoping that we'll be able to share schedules out with our students and community sometime next week. Uh, that's our hope, fingers crossed is that we'll be able to do that by the end of next week. So that's the schedule. In terms of professional development for our staff and orientation plans for our families, uh, we have finalized our professional development plan and are just so thankful for those extra days that we are able to spend with our staff and with our families to really prepare everybody as best we can for entry into this new and different school year. And so we have events planned for our ninth graders on September ninth, where we will do a drive-through experience, kind of similar to how we passed out um, graduation materials and locker things in the spring and have some just fun ideas of how to welcome everybody to Sherwood High School. Uh, in addition to that, thinking through how to help our seniors also feel welcome to this school year, this is a big deal for them. Um, and then also obviously our tenth and eleventh graders. So we want people to understand that this is an exciting time, it, it's new, it's different, but it's something that we are, we are excited about. In terms of working with our staff, we um, have been hosting listening sessions and, and staff meetings that have been optional for the last three weeks. And so we spend about an hour, hour and a half with our staff, just asking, answering questions and sharing information. And um, it, it's been refreshing, i- it, the first time we The first time we did it, there was a lot of anxiety and a lot of questions and uncertainty. But we had one yesterday and, you know, I'm just so proud of the teachers and our staff and just their positive attitude and how they're just approaching this whole situation. And so we, we are ready. We're ready to walk into this year and to continue to do great things for kids. And so that's something that I'm, I'm just really proud of the staff that I'm working with. Other quick updates are around our homeroom. I think I talked, I spoke with you guys about that the last time. And we have plans in place for contacting all of our students and all of our families. And so that's all ready to go and that'll take place on the 9th, 10th, and 11th of September. So at the end of that week, we will be reaching out to all of our families and making sure that everybody has everything they need to be able to access the learning. Next, please. In terms of professional developments, we kind of have tried to, well, we surveyed our staff first. That was the first thing we did and asked what were the needs from them as we move into comprehensive distance learning? And something that came through loud and clear was this, they were starving for engagement strategies for a digital classroom. And when our high school team sat down to start to talk about that, it didn't take us long to recognize that the four of us have never taught in a comprehensive distance learning model. And so therefore, maybe are not the best experts in delivering how to do that to our teachers. And so we've reached out to our partners with Avid and they have developed some very strong professional development around that very topic. And so we are having all of our teachers be trained, participate in a training from Avid, using Avid professional developers for part of our time together next week. And so that's a big piece for us and I'm really excited about it. It's going to be really powerful for our teachers to be able to hear again from experts that have had this experience and have really refined over the last six months what it means to be working in a digital world in terms of education. You can see the other things that we're really working on and figuring out in terms of nuts and bolts. Obviously, moving into the new building, we still have a lot of things that we have to cover with our staff. And so that's a big part of our professional development. And then the logistics of just the technology tools, us moving to Zoom is a new learning platform for us. And so we are going to train that out as best we can. And that is all. Next, please. So in terms of next steps, they're pretty similar to what they were before. Just again, going back to the master schedule and just trying to get that situated so that students and families can see classes and that teachers can actually start building out their classes in Canvas. We're welcoming everyone back to school. And so that has been occurring. We are hosting right now in the midst of this week, open forums and Q and A sessions with our students. And so we separated those out by grade level. And so we've got people that are just there answering questions for students that are, have been great. And then we are looking to plan an opportunity for parents and families to ask questions or just have some contact with us sometime next week in one of, in an evening, just if people have continuing things that they would like to know. I think I mentioned we're doing during orientation week, talking about how we're delivering textbooks and materials and all those sorts of things. And so trying to make sure that that's all well organized and that it's a positive added atmosphere for everybody to be involved in. And then lastly, this, just this morning, we met with this as a secondary team to put our finishing touches on our Canvas expectations so that we can make sure that, as we talked about the last time, that we are aligned 612 with how we're utilizing Canvas. So that's kind of where we're at. One additional thing that I just, I wanted to share with you also that didn't make it into the presentation was that over the last week and a half or so, we've been receiving a lot of communication from families of our seniors and asking the question about whether or not their students could graduate early. If they met the 28 credit requirements, could they graduate early? And our team has been talking about this a lot because, like you all, we fully believe in the work that we are doing and the connection to school and how important that is for all students. And we also recognize that we're living in a pandemic and that this might be a time that we are less stringent with our expectations and requirements for early graduation. And so I wanted to get your guys' feedback on that and make sure that that was something that we could all support, that if a student has met the graduation requirements or would meet the graduation requirement sometime before June of this year, that we could move forward with allowing them to graduate early without making a judgment call, I guess, based off of what we believe to be a good plan for their next steps. But that is what I have for you tonight.
If that last was a question and assuming that we're kind of like with the quarter stuff, we're making some decisions for this year that don't bind us for going forward. I, I support that, given the circumstances for this year.
Melissa, yes, it would just be for this year. Thanks for the clarification. This is just for this year, given our current reality.
Hard work from here, but I totally get it. And why would I keep on if they've already, if they've met their requirements? It's just, it's just really so sad. I fully understand.
So if we do allow them to graduate early, would they also have to? I know in the past, I believe we've had them complete a plan of what they planned on doing next. Would that be part of the early graduation package or whatever they have to application? Would they apply for early graduation?
Yes, our plan would be to keep the same process. And this is, I am speaking just from what I've been told. But what I believe has happened in the past with the process is that then after the application is completed, there's a series of decision points and criteria that are followed in order to make the decisions. And what we are proposing at this point is that if they've met the graduation requirements and they submit the plan, that we are saying this is, this is good. This is good enough to warrant without making any sort of judgment call on it.
I just want to chime in. You know, we've spoken in various ways about providing some historical context about what the board, what we have talked about in past years as it relates to this. And I just, I appreciate the, you know, the recommendation from you and your team, Melissa, the thought behind that and the board's support because we really do believe that for this year, it's the right, it's the right thing to do. So thank you. Thank you for your support on that. Are there any other, any, any questions for Melissa for our weekend's years?
One quick question. There's the family orientation week. Is that next week or the week of the 7th for families?
It's the week of the 7th.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, Ms. Barrett. We appreciate it. Thanks for all the hard work. And we are going to talk about nutrition and transportation. So Sandy Nowhere is going to go to the podium. And Lizanne is joining us via Zoom. We talk about these two topics together for the reason that you're aware of. We are, the team is working really hard on how to use our bus fleet to help distribute meals. And so with that, Sandy, I'll turn it over to you and Lizanne.
So good. I'm here to talk about a couple of different topics. We'll start out with the supply and delivery plan. So when we first started thinking of this concept, we were thinking in terms of how can we fill a gap or reach some students that maybe needed stuff they didn't have. So the plan is to use our, basically service every bus route that we have if needed. So the schools will give us supplies. We built a calendar and it's scheduled for schools that once a week per break, they'll get a delivery. So if a student needs a technology device, if they need a book, if they need supplies, and then of course, the lunches and breakfasts will be delivered at the same time. So we're going to do that in the afternoon to not interfere with the school's, the students' educational days. So we'll make sure and do those runs after the school day concludes for all the schools. And one of my concerns going into this was if we're going to use bus stops, we got to make sure that it's safe for our staff and the community and the students. So we're going to pair up drivers and combine routes so that we can have two individuals on each bus. When you're making a school bus stop, the driver can just be a driver and the second driver on the bus and then work on the ending things after the student, keeping those social distances and all of that. And the school supply deliveries will be available to all schools and spread special programs so that we ensure that all students that need that are able to go to the school and get their, their things that they need. Or schools just need to get supplies to kids, we can, we can fill that gap. And some of the benefits of this is that the drivers, we're using drivers on the routes that they've had. So the students get to see their drivers and the drivers get to see their kids. And so it'll start to build that connection with the school back again. And so that'll be a good benefit to this plan. And of course, the students get to much the amount of supplies that they need. And Lizanne's going to take a minute and talk about the meal hubs. Because this deliberate plan would be for kids that live outside the box. So Lizanne's going to talk about our school meal hubs.
Thank you, Sandy. Hello, everyone. We're going to have hubs open at each school. And the plan is to have it to be seamless, whether we're comprehensive distance learning in the cloud or at school, to be able to accommodate that for everybody. And the plan for the meal hubs will be more for the walking students. And it's going to be the timeframe for that time for them to pick up their meals will be more around their lunch, lunch period. And it just depends, each school level is a little different with that. And we'll get that communication out. I'm planning on that for mid next week. And we're also, right now, currently, we're going to be able to do a pre-order form. And it's for paid students and free and reduced. At this time, it's much different than in the spring. We would very much like the USDA to pass a waiver that will be very much like the spring and we won't have so many constraints to follow the National School Lunch Program. But we're going to go ahead and be able to offer everybody a service. It's just that it won't be free for everyone at this time. And we're going to start on Monday, the 14th. And we'll be, get all the communication out and get all that up and running next week. And I think that's what I have for now and I'll turn it back to Sandy.
Right, and then we kind of looked at this in two different phases for CBL and cloud together and then hybrid and cloud. And we don't have all the details worked out with the hybrid model yet because it gets a little bit more complicated once we move to hybrid. But our intention and our goal is to continue to serve students that are not in school in some capacity even once we move to hybrid. All right, any questions on the meal supply delivery?
Just, does that mean that the hub continues when we're in the hybrid cloud model? Or goes to the details or?
That's kind of a part of the details that we're working out, but it would almost certainly have to continue because we still need to make sure that kids that are going to our cloud canvas or, you know, or learn from home have access to the meals and the supplies. All right, so I'm going to move on to, if there's no more questions, to the plan for transportation. When we get to move to bringing the K through three group in and really even beyond that, that it will be the same plans. Wanted to talk a little bit about the safety equipment that we're offering our staff. So as Ken Bell mentioned earlier, each driver will get two masks and one face shield. The mask will be required at all times for drivers to wear. The face shields will again, will be an option for them to use while students are loading the bus. We did pretty extensive tests with driving and a face shield and the reflections and the distortions just don't make it possible and safe for drivers to use them while they're actually driving. But we want them to have the option of the face shield while students are loading. And the gloves will be available to drivers for driving, but they'll be required while they're cleaning the buses. So we're going to give them the option to actually wear the gloves while they're driving. But for any cleaning, that it'll be a requirement. And we're going to have hand sanitizer, we have hand sanitizer and wash things and stuff available to them and cycle for cleaning them. And we've developed a student screening protocol for drivers to use. It includes instructions for visual screening while students are boarding the bus. It talks about isolation measures if those are necessary. And what I think to be just as important, it has guidance on when not to isolate a student. So if you have students with chronic conditions or, you know, that aren't developing conditions, we don't want to be isolating students when it's not necessary. Get by hybrid. And then the drivers will be filling out contact tracing logs upon arrival at school and then prior to leaving the school in the afternoon. So they're not trying to chuck off kids at bus stops. We'll basically take a roll on the way, the kids' way off the bus and then back on it in the afternoon to fill that need. And we're also exploring some, some options with district software like Synergy and our new Raddick software to versa. We're in kind of the early stages of that. So reducing bus capacity plan, this was probably the biggest challenge for all of us in transportation in this whole COVID pandemic that we're in. Casey Juppens developed this, this graphic for us to use for our in-service for our drivers. And I thought it was really good to show you as well. So the idea is the guidance is a recommendation of three feet apart for students and six feet apart from the driver. And so what we are going with is a staggered seating where not only, you basically have a three feet front to back, but we decided that staggering them, as you can see in the graphic, where you're not sitting them back to back unless they're a same household student. If you have, if you have a student in the same household, then you could actually put one on the window seat and still have that three feet because you can sit those students together. And then all of this gives us a capacity of somewhere between 24 and 30 students per bus, depending on how many same household students we're transporting and are able to put on those window seats. And then isolation zone, this gives a really good graphic for the isolation zone. It's in red at the front of the bus. So the guidance says to place the students in basically that first row, farthest away from the driver, which is where on the top graphic, there you see the little girl. And then you, we have to have the barrier back or the next row back empty and in certain cases, the row further back from that to give that six feet of distance for that isolation that's, that's required. This will involve displacing some students if we have to take these isolation measures. The drivers are going to be asked to try to seat kids, if they need to do that, seat kids with their classes so that you maintain a classroom cohort if you have to put students together on the bus. And drivers will have masks available for the students that need to be isolated, that don't already have one. Seating charts, all the, it will take a couple of weeks to roll out because we don't have all the kids on the first day of school that are going to be riding buses. But we will be using seating charts so that should we have an outbreak, we can say that Johnny always sat behind Sarah and, you know, we can pinpoint right down to that detail. And you're only sitting, you know, two, two students in a seat per day. So that by using a seating chart, you're sure they're sitting in the same seat every day. And then bus cleaning, Ken spoke about earlier, the drivers will be playing touch circuits with between every run, so between every group of students. And the drivers will be required to clean the buses daily and will have a thorough disinfection, disinfection with backpack sprayer once a day. So is there any questions?
Just a clarification. So even though the buses are at half capacity in hybrid, we should be able to support all the groups and all the students because at the middle school, you know, there's only, there's two groups that are only half the students are being bused at a time, the bubbles and the arrows. And at the high school, there's three groups. So we, there shouldn't be a capacity problem at all.
We, we should not at the elementary level. We may, when all students come back, we may have to do some, look at, do some double runs. runs in the elementary, where the bus will drop some students off, and then go back out and pick up a set of them, bring them to school and reverse that family. But we have already put those plans in place for when students need them. Thank you. You said that the drivers will have masks for kids that need isolation in the event that they already have a mask. Is it the expectation that all students on a bus will be wearing a mask? It is, but we're still going to have them available in those two cases. That makes total sense to me. I just wanted to make clear, I just want to clarify that every student should have a mask, because we're going to require them, doesn't matter if riding the buses. Yeah, we are, absolutely.
I kind of had a higher level question. That was, is the student ridership that we have on our buses, is that, is that getting predictable over time? Like if we have a bus route, I know that there may be, I think, 30 kids eligible, but there's a certain percentage that actually ride every day, and there's adjustments. Is that, do you feel like that is a predictable number of adjustment over time?
Yes, we can get very, fairly close. And in fact, that's how we got the numbers for figuring out whether we need to do double runs or, you know, what's the standard? Reduce our numbers, we go about 30. But yes, it typically, a certain percentage of high schools ride, and so we can handle so and so on. It's fair. Now, the pandemic might change that a little bit for us, because in certain cases, in some places, it's not only ride costs amount. So. Sandy, I just want to say that you and Lizanne.
Yes.
On our job of figuring all of this out and just wrapping your arms around those kids and getting them food and supply, it just, it just makes me so proud of our show. Just really wonderful.
And I'd just like to echo that. I mean, this is one of the, one of the big things I always point to when I talk to my neighbors, my coworkers, that, you know, these are things that schools have to do hard a lot of kids day, and it's so important to do it. And I don't think a lot of people in the public realize the amount of work that was still done by our teachers or our bus drivers, even when we were shut down, you know, and didn't spray on the pan. I think once you kind of articulate to people that these kind of, their eyes open up, you know, oh my gosh, our schools are so much more than, you know, just places of markets.
I knew we were about to start our presentation, so I was kidding. So I'm pretty excited, yeah.
Thank you, Sandy.
One other quick question. Sorry, I want to reiterate that your support in the spray for families was crucial with the meals and everything, the transportation. One thing that just occurred to me, though, when K-3 starts, you know, we have half full buses, but we have four of the six elementary schools being bused to school. So we will start having the transportation issues at the elementary level before the full elementary is in hybrid. But even when K-3 is in hybrid, there'll be some of those double runs going on, right?
I would expect our K-3 numbers to be low enough to fall within that 30 capacity that we're aiming for. And if it's not, we can do those double runs in the elementary school or have those sessions taken.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Thanks, Lizanne. Okay, we are going to switch gears to the middle school and Ms. Thunder, hi.
Thank you, Superintendent Carty. Good evening, everyone. So I'm just going to jump, jump right in and share with you some of the community feedback that we pulled from our survey, specific to what families found as positives of our plan, was that they liked the, that the classes are scheduled in order for students and families to have routines and predictability in place. They also liked the flexibility between the models and the opportunity for seamless transitions from CDL to hybrid. Offering classes every day was a positive versus running an A-B model. Families were excited about teachers hosting live classes every day and the opportunity for classes to be more interactive. The shift from trimesters to quarters was also seen as a positive, as it not only aligns with the high school, but it also gives students the opportunity to revisit previous learning. And families really liked that we connected the cohort, cohorts to our logo, arrows and bows, versus cohort A and B or team one and team two. Some things that emerged from concerns of the plan were that students may be congregating during arrival dismissal, passing time in the hallways. And there were also concerns around, oh, sorry, next slide, Christine. Oh, no, you're good. Sorry, my bad. Multitasking. So congregating during arrival dismissal and passing time in the hallways, concerns about a perceived lack of electives. Families and students with special needs express concerns around having necessary supports in place and available for students. And lastly, families had concerns around the opportunities for students to build relationships. And that was really specific to peer-to-peer relationships. So I'll talk a little bit more on that after we talk, when I talk about some of our next steps. Next slide, please. So some progress that we have made with our plan, some is based on the feedback, others just progress in general. Our comprehensive distance learning teams, learning team has finalized our CDL schedule, and it mirrors much of what the schedule will look like when we move to hybrid, with the exception of the class period time, the length of the class periods. Students will still attend all six classes daily, and consisting of both the core and elective classes, synchronous learning opportunities will be included in every day, in every class every day. And we'll continue to focus on social emotional learning during our homeroom advisory class time each day. And as we were planning for professional development, like Ms. Barron said, it was important that we found out what staff would find most helpful to be prepared for the upcoming school year, and that was really specific to technology training. And based on that feedback that we received, our SMS CDL team, which was comprised of teaching staff, developed instructional professional development using a variety of tech tools, which I'll share a little bit more detail of that in a minute. And like the high school, we're going to participate in the Avid Elevate Professional Development. However, we're holding off till our October PD and January PD, and the reason for that is much of what our team has created is going to align with what the Avid Elevate is also going to offer. We've adjusted our model for interventions for students who need support in reading, writing, and math, and we'll be offering an access class that replicates the high school model. And by adjusting our interventions, we'll be able to offer the access class daily for students on IEPs, 504s, or any other students that might benefit from some extra additional support. Next slide, please. So the next two weeks of professional development with staff will include embedded time for them to reach out to families and host virtual home visits. As you know, we've always put relationship and culture building with staff as a priority, not only at the beginning of the year, but all year. So we're going to continue to build on the work that our Culture Committee did over the past two years. Throughout our PD, we'll focus on equity and anti-racism and the impacts they have on teaching and learning. Earlier, I had mentioned that the CDL team has focused on how to implement instructional tech tools, and those tools will focus on differentiation and universal design for learning, accountable talk and student-to-student discourse. And you may recall, that's been an instructional focus at the middle level for the last two years. And what does that look like in an online format? Social emotional learning for students and activities that teachers will be able to do with them immediately. And then professional development around Canvas and other technology tools, along with the opportunity for implementation time and giving teachers time to collaborate during their, with CLT, with their CLTs. Next slide, please. Our next steps include, but are certainly not limited to finalizing class schedules for staff and students. We are almost complete with that. Our schedules for staff are complete, and we're finalizing schedules for students and hoping to get that out to families soon. Beginning to reach out to families to schedule virtual home visits, learning specialists and counselors. And then Jake and Millie and I have also talked about how opportunities for us to maybe do that. Provide training opportunities for students and families around Zoom, Synergy, and Canvas, so that they are prepared. Welcoming staff and students back to school, which means providing ongoing updates and communication about events in the upcoming school year. And we're hoping to have an orientation week where we put in place a distribution plan for textbooks or material pickup, similar to what we did in the spring, and similar to potentially with our sixth graders, what we're doing with ninth graders, as well as provide support for family and students in these challenging times. As Melissa mentioned earlier, finalizing our Canvas expectations, six through 12, and communicating what those expectations are with staff during the professional development. I think that's all I have to share. There's questions?
Or the one or the ones on IEPs and...
You have to repeat.
It doesn't make sense.
You have to repeat, it was needed.
Oh, the virtual home visits, is that planned for all students?
Yes, it is planned for all students, and our plan is for that to happen through a combination of our counselors, our learning specialists, as well as during our advisory. And our advisory class is going to be, also connect, just as a side note, to our logo. We've learned that a, like a group of arrows is called a, or right, Millie and Jake, is it quivers or arrows, is called a flight. So we will have a flight time advisory. And that's where those will happen. And that's where the social emotional learning will happen as well. A group of archers, that's what it is. The group of archers is called a flight.
All right. Okay, thank you so much, Maria. Thank you for that great update and just the really hard, great work of you and your team. Thanks a lot.
I appreciate that, and I really want to give a shout out to Ms. Wilkinson and Mr. Healy. They have been phenomenal in this, phenomenal in this process.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll just keep moting right along here and transition into special programs, but Karen Dolby and Aaron Nichols.
Well, good evening, Board of Directors and Superintendent Carty. As we shared during our last boardwork session, recently, ODE provided districts with updated information that is, that impacts special programs. Until metrics are met, the guidance requires that districts first consider how to provide educational services to all students in the comprehensive distance learning model, and that limited in-person instruction cannot replace this requirement. After a period of time, for some students, the IEP team may need to meet to review progress data and to discuss adaptations, modifications, and additional options for learning. Regarding teacher facilitated instruction, prior ODE guidance stated that services must be provided exclusively in a synchronous manner. The new information provided on August 11th clarified that the majority of special education and EL instruction should be teacher facilitated instruction, meaning that it can include both synchronous instruction and asynchronous or applied learning activities. This is a change that provides more flexibility in meeting our students' needs. Some of the procedural guidance regarding IEP documents has changed. Teams will examine each IEP individually to ensure that students are able to receive the services required in the CDL, hybrid, and cloud campus models. Teams are already beginning this work. As we transition between learning models, staff will host meetings to identify any barriers for students and families and to revise IEPs as necessary. As Gary talked a little bit about in his time, the district is required to complete all special education evaluations that were not completed last year, and to create a process for completing evaluations moving forward. Likewise, we'll need to complete ELPA screening tests for all incoming students whose language you surveyed indicates that a second language is used in the home. We will also screen students who are unable to complete the ELPA test at the end of last year to measure proficiency on the EL state standards. We also learned that limited in-person instruction can be considered for some student groups based on identifying need, but cannot be based on disability, race, gender, sexual orientation, or other protected classes. The district's actively working on a plan for the possibility of conducting limited in-person instruction. Next slide, please. We've been working closely with building administrators and teams to develop plans for special education and related services that align with building CDL, hybrid, and cloud campus models. In the high school and middle school levels, special education services and services for emerging bilingual students will be delivered primarily through an access class. For elementary students, there's time embedded throughout the school day for the provision of services. Learning specialists, speech pathologists, and instructional assistants will provide teacher facilitated instruction that aligns to each student's IEP goals. Next slide, please. So in the last two weeks, there have been many procedural updates that impact special program staff and the students we serve. We're working hard to front-load professional development with various special program work groups, with a focus on the updated procedural guidance, as well as training staff to support students and families with the new requirements under CDL. We've been focusing on this work now, prior to staff officially returning from summer break. This will provide the opportunity for our learning specialists, speech language pathologists, and EL teachers to participate in their building level professional development opportunities, to collaborate with generalized teachers and instructional assistants, and to connect with families. Next slide, please. Special program staff are continuing to work hard on developing plans that are specific to students in special education and for emerging bilingual students. Our school psychologists have started developing a framework for how we will safely complete special education evaluations. This involves the creation of safety protocols, in addition to research around new assessment materials and techniques to minimize direct student contact. Speech pathologists are busy working on developing schedules that align with building master schedules, examining all IEPs to plan for comprehensive distance learning, hybrid, and cloud campus, as well as reviewing updated guidance related to teletherapy. Learning specialists are busy reading through all of the new guidance and are working to develop support and service provision schedules. They are reviewing all IEPs for students on their caseloads to determine if any changes are necessary. When licensed staff officially return to work, we will begin scheduling meetings with families to discuss individual needs for the school year. During these meetings, we will focus conversations on potential barriers to student access to distance learning and ways that the district can support families. That concludes our special programs update. What questions do you have for us?
It's really thorough and very well done. I have no questions, just complete admiration for what your team are doing.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you so much, Karen, and thanks to you and Erin and your team, just for all of the work. I, as I watch and listen to what it's like, must be like for you to pour through all of the guidance and then separate out the various pieces and next steps, the levels of complexity are enormous. And so thank you so much. Thanks a lot. We're going to transition. We're going to transition to an operational update now from Mr. Emmer in Human Resources.
Thank you, Superintendent Carty. Good evening, Board of Directors. So briefly just to let you know what we're doing in terms of staffing for the comprehensive distance learning model. All of our staff members, of course, may be delivering synchronous and asynchronous learning virtually. And they've been working really hard to create a plan for that. When we do that for a hybrid model, it's going to look a little bit different at the secondary level than it does at the elementary level. I think our principals have alluded to this, so I probably won't be new information. But at the secondary level, in the hybrid model, our teachers will teach cloud campus students and in-person students. And so there will not be specific cloud campus teachers at the secondary level. Elementary, however, will have some cloud campus teachers and the majority of our teachers will be teaching in the hybrid model. And so last week we sent out a survey just to find out which if teachers could choose, which they would choose and why, what the reasons behind that were. Not really knowing what the breakdown would be. And we determined on Friday, as we had gathered all of the cloud campus information from the community, that you would need 12 teachers to each grade level to teach in the cloud campus initially. When the survey results came in from teachers, 11 of them had signed up for the cloud campus. And a handful of them had signed up for no preference, just wherever you can put us. And so we've been working this week on staffing then those two models, communicating with teachers, and really felt very good about how that worked out because that has not been the case in every district. And so we were very, very thankful for that. In terms of classified staff, we've been working really hard to figure out what kinds of professional development we would need to offer when they return and how we would best be able to plug them in, knowing that some of their duties potentially will change based on the needs for comprehensive distance learning. So all of our classified staff will return with our licensed staff when I say return virtually, with our licensed staff on Monday. They'll engage in professional development Monday and most of them Tuesday. Some of them may flex a day depending on the needs of students and campuses for a different day that week. And they will also be here Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday before students come back engaging in professional development. So we initially were a little bit worried about how we would best be able to plug in all of our classified staff, wanting to keep all of them employed. I think now the question, the greater question is, how will we get all of this done with the number of people we have employed? And so we're also excited about that. We've also had just a handful of people who have expressed concerns about coming back. And so we're working through the ADA process with those staff members to see if there's a way we can accommodate them so that they can engage in what we're doing. Next slide, please. As Gary talked a little bit about this, so I don't know how much detail I need to go into, but as you can see, the majority of our employees live in Washington County. We have just over 10% who live in Clackamas County and under 10% who live in the other counties. A little bit of a surprise for me. I thought we did more in Yamhill County just based on what I've known in the past. But we're glad about that because as of this week, Clackamas County is even lower than Washington County in their metrics. And so Clackamas County was at 29 out of 100,000 cases and 4.6% testing positive. And Washington County was 34 out of 100,000 and 4.4% testing positive. So we will be watching both of those counties. I really appreciated Director Allen, what you shared with us tonight because we've been trying really hard to track down whether or not it's a requirement to abide by the metrics in both counties or whether or not it's a suggestion. And so that was very helpful for us. I think it'll just help us as we move forward. So do you have any questions about either of these two slides at all? Anything?
Thanks, Steve. Okay, and last but certainly not least, we are going to turn it over to Mr. Smith, who is going to give the presentation for the elementary school update. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Carty. Good evening, everyone, directors, colleagues. Thank you for your time this evening. So on this first slide, as you can see, there's listed bullet points that are reflective of comments, feedback from our community directly related to elementary schools listed under some things that we saw repeatedly bearing out some sort of pattern. I don't know that we're terribly surprised by the feedback here. And I'm, I know that you're likely familiar with it by now. I would say, you know, just a couple of things in particular. One thing that's interesting, and I think Melissa referred to this in her high school presentation, thinking back to the green red line. It's interesting here, we, the responses were really sort of indicative of mindsets, right? Sort of either abundance versus scarcity and sort of opposing views, example being while some parents felt that the options as presented presented more hands-on opportunities, thus less screen time. We had another segment of our parents who felt that it still included way too much screen time. But again, we know that's a hot button topic these days. And I would think that the one thing on here that is continues to be troubling for us is is the concern expressed by families, particularly younger students, about how they're going to manage a homeschool setting and how do they balance their work in school and the long-term effects for the social emotional health of our children. We share, we share those same concerns, of course. So thank you. Next slide. I'm sorry. Based on some of this feedback and the work that has been ongoing, we've been engaged in quite a number of activities as of recently. And, and so I want to go to the, the fourth bullet here, core planning team, because so much of the work that we've done has also been informed by our core planning team at the elementary level. It's a group of about 35 absolutely amazing colleagues that are representative of all four of the elementary schools, from regular ed to special ed to classified. And, and, and they've been under the leadership of Marlene Carroll, who has done amazing work in leading this group. And so that's been really the hub from which so many things, so many ideas have been vetted and so many of the plans have been developed. Sample schedules for students and teachers, we worked really hard to tighten up that student schedule, daily schedule. We know that that was for many families of grave concern. How do I get my little five or six-year-old in front of a screen for X amount of hours? And so we tried to, we know that there's great power in a visual. And so we knew that was an important tool, but we've tried to be as realistic as possible. And then equally even for our teachers, so they could try to visualize what their day might look like under the guidance, that the teacher schedule has been, I think, a powerful tool and will be really be helpful and informing teachers as we move into the next few weeks. Pretty immediately, we had that follow-up FAQ. We had so much feedback, informal feedback through social media that we knew that we needed a quick response. And, and so that was, that was one of our early efforts immediately following the community forum. And we think that really helped clarify some things for families. And so that was one of our efforts as well. We met with our kinder team across the district. We had a Zoom meeting with all of our kinder teachers. Last week, we wanted, we really felt it was important and to put some energy into our youngest, newest students and their families. And so again, an amazing group of people. And last week, we were able to send out an email that included a video link for students. The video was a very short, five minutes maybe, our kinder teachers speaking to the children, welcoming them, making them feel hopefully more comfortable, giving them a face and a name. And including that as well was a link to a survey that was shared by a couple of Middleton kinder teachers who've been using it the last several years. That tool, the feedback we get from that tool will really help inform our class placement for kinders. We don't have the luxury of ramp up this year for kinder. And so we hope that that will really help us make more informed choices about really solid placements for kids. That's due late this week and will be used and vetted by our kinder team in the coming week, week and a half. We, we've had some conversations around how best to use our specialists, using PE in particular. And, and, and we're fortunate to have a group of people who are willing and capable. Some of that was, some of the decisions we've had to make along the way haven't always involved a lot of collaboration. Sometimes we just need to make a decision. And so the principals, my colleagues and I, we reached out and asked these people to take on some roles and do some things. And, and, and they were willing. They just want to be helpful. So we've had those kinds of conversations. Obviously, we've invested a lot in PD planning. You'll see it on the next slide, that slide that's been a real focus of our work. We've worked closely, Sandy and Suzanne, wonderful. You heard the presentation earlier. What a blessing. And so we've, we've met with them and used the information they've had to begin to formulate some other work around how we distribute meals and the like. We also knew that CSO was a big lift for especially our intermediate teachers. And so our teaching and learning department, Gary in particular, very generous and supportive of that. We were able to offer some hours of training prior to this coming Monday. For anybody who wanted to take their own time, they would be compensated to use some, some of the videos that CSO puts out. And, and just based on informal feedback from our teaching colleagues, those have been very helpful. We've heard very positive reviews of that. So we feel like we go into next week with a little bit more of a foundation for all of our, all of our staff. Thank you. Next slide. So PD specific, I would say that we, this, this was informed largely by feedback again from that core planning team that I referenced earlier. And so Monday, we're going to, we're going to invest in really the technologies, Zoom as that live instructional platform and CSO. Those two areas in particular are going to get the, the focus of our energy on Monday. We're very fortunate. You know, it's so interesting when you ask teachers, you know, we need some experts to help us present this PD. Of course, teachers are so humble. Nobody considers themselves an expert. We had an absolutely amazing conversation today in our final core planning team meeting. It was around CSO. It was around how to build expectations and so forth. And, you know, the cream rises and those people who really are very competent in that really rose up and helped in guiding that conversation. And so we'll have our own people leading those presentations by and large, and their classroom teachers who are familiar with it. Jenny Larson also, it's been a great resource there. And so we're thankful. That's the focus of Monday. Remember, Monday and Tuesday includes our classified staff as well. So they'll be right there beside us as we recognize they're a great resource in supporting the instruction online. Speaking of Jenny Larson, Tuesday rolls into bridges. She is absolutely an expert. We're very fortunate. She's been doing some PD this summer for Math Learning Center and other districts. And our teachers are going to get the benefit of all of that learning. Our instructional coaches are going to have the lead on, on units to study. And of course, they're so familiar with that, that curriculum out of Teachers College, both of those, both Math Learning Center and Teachers College have done a lot of work this summer in adapting the curriculum for a virtual setting. So we're very excited about that. We have a group of people who have volunteered to be on a social studies and science committee to develop a scope and sequence and a pacing guide for teachers. And this is an effort that actually contributes in a year when we are needing to consider social studies adoption. So we think there's going to be great opportunity there. Again, teachers volunteering and stepping into the gap to support their colleagues. Much of the, of the, of the week in terms of these curricular trainings is sort of going to be framed around how to support students in a virtual academic environment. And, and our teachers, very interesting, again, this is feedback from those teachers in the core planning team of, you know, how do we assess online? So our hope is that through our trainings, they will see sort of live examples of how that works. We know it's only beginning and that we'll continue to learn for, you know, the first several weeks, but this is our beginning largely. And then of course, we can't forget our, our social emotional learning. We know this is an ongoing need. We're going to have some virtual home visits planned for the week of the ninth, 10th, and 11th for our first through fifth grade teachers. They'll set those up with families, 20 to 30 minutes, Zoom meetings, introducing themselves, and then really asking the students and their parent to tell their stories to a certain degree. We're hoping to include some empathy interview type questions and hearing about how their experience has been so far, if they experienced last spring in an online setting. And we believe that will inform some of how we support individual students and families. Community circles on a daily basis, such a powerful tool for the social emotional learning. And we'll continue to use, that'd be a great way for students to interact with one another. We'll have our counseling team and we've got our PACS. Even this week, we've had teachers who've continued to attend, of course, this summer, online PACS training. So we continue to build our, our resource in that regard, more and more teachers coming along with PACS. Then the other modules for staff training, you know, we have some, we'll, we'll have to roll out attendance protocols, back to school night preparation. Some of those things will happen in the week of the ninth, the 10th at some staff meetings. And we put that on there also because we recognize, and this was the conversation earlier reference when, when Gary was up there regarding, how do we transition to in-person? And part of that time is going to be exactly what I said, we're going to have to have again, some PD around. How do I clean my room? Where, you know, how does lunch look? How do I manage that? I mean, you can imagine, what does arrival dismissal look like and so on and so forth. So, so the PD does not stop with this next week. Thank you. Next slide. And so of course, our next steps, and it's interesting because when we put these on there, those next steps are quite frankly, things that we're, you know, engaging in all the time. So, but certainly we've got some work to do around master schedules. We absolutely have to coordinate services for our specialty students, ELD students and so forth. We have to make sure that they don't miss any direct instruction from their classroom teacher. And so we'll have to put those schedules together. We need to reorganize classroom placements as a result of the students of the approximately 303, at my last count, elementary students who who register for the cloud means that they are no longer in a class placement for the hybrid model. So we have to reconstitute classes. So we've got some work to do around that next week. We have some strategies in place that we'll roll out to teachers next week and we'll give them some time to put those together, really put their, their minds to it and make sure we get kids placed as appropriately as possible. The, this has been mentioned several times, the finalizing of staffing decisions. As was mentioned earlier, we're so grateful that it worked out. The numbers worked out 12. Required 12 FTE at this point to accommodate those 303 kids, two per grade level. And, and, and so we, the class sizes range, it appears at this anywhere from somewhere around 30, maybe a little bit more. It's a little, we try to break students up so that a specific teacher would have as few schools, students represented by schools as possible. In most cases, we were able to get it down to two schools. So if I'm a cloud teacher in second grade, for example, I might have Hawksview and Middleton. My partner might have the other two schools. In one instance, we may have a situation where we'll have to have three schools represented, but nonetheless, it worked out pretty cleanly at this point, and we're grateful for that. We have to continue to plan then for capacity issues. Can we, with those kids who are left in the hybrid, we have to try and make sure that those classes are not so large that we can't accommodate them, should we be able to come back on campus? And, and at this point, we're feeling, I should probably knock on wood and maybe shouldn't even say this out loud, but we're feeling pretty good that we think we will be able to accommodate should that occur. Obviously, those things could change at trimester or end of grading periods, depending on if kids migrate one way or the other. And of course, school isn't open yet. New students, you know, are still enrolling each day. And some students continue to leave us each day. It seems to be about a net. We were comparing notes yesterday. It seems like we seem to be gaining about as many as we're losing right now. So we've, we've got to continue to look at how we're going to most maximize our classified staff in supporting our students and our teachers. Even today, we created, really had a great conversation with core planning team around creating common agreements for CSO. This is a unique opportunity. If we get it right now, it will serve us well for a long time to come. And so we really want to make this, we want to get this one right. And this is in service by and large to families and children. So they don't, a family, if they have two children at the elementary level, both teachers using CSO, but they don't have to guess where teacher X is putting assignments and where teacher Y is. It's always in the same place. They click the same buttons, and so we're really trying to create the uniformity around that. Talked about virtual home visits. We think this can be a powerful tool. We have some work to do around family training for CSO on Zoom, but we're doing this in conjunction with IT, calling them tech checks. And we're developing the plans there. They're coming along nicely. And then, finally, this notion of, here's, we refer to as the school-to-home portal. How do we get a library book home and back again? How do we get the math kits that we purchased for every student home and back again? Initially, at the beginning of the year, we have the technology deployment and so forth. And then, just so, it's Sandy referenced earlier, the transportation department is developing a schedule that'll, when drivers are available, could dictate a lot of that. Archaglen just happens to be in a unique position in that we're virtually an entirely walk-only school. So, ours may look slightly different as we won't be constrained by the busing limitations. But we're working in conjunction, and we'll be putting and finalizing those plans in the coming days. So, that's an example of some of the next steps for elementary. Thank you. Any questions?
I do have a question for elementary specifically, but the fact that we have such a large portion of our students participating in the cloud campus, specifically at, you know, at elementary where there's essentially two units per grade. Have we thought about, I don't know, the vision with everything else? How we use this moment to kind of study what the impacts are for kids? I mean, it just occurred to me, listening to all of the, kind of the unique features. Is there, for certain students, would this be how they close the gap? Because they feel more, because in a virtual setting, which is a hybrid setting? It seems like because we've got such a large number of kids occupying to that, we have to think about how do we, how do we at least track them as we do our data and study at the end of the year or look at social-emotional utilization? Or, you know, is there representative, equally representative in terms of kids who are SBS or ALL in both? I just, I have a feeling that there are going to be more sitting here this time next year. There will be learnings from this, and we should at a minimum at least track these kids separately so that we can figure out what we not know, but we now know. That I'm really, I'm sorry, this is not on track with what Tim was talking about, but it just, that number just sat with me and the more I thought about it, I'm just really fascinated by. What is it that we're going to learn about this teaching model that may have value for more than just right now?
I think, you know, what I think about that is that when we get the school year up and running and we're all able to actually take a breath and all that comes along with that, that that's one of the many things that we should, that we should be taking a close look at. In fact, when the cloud campus came to fruition and Brady Strutz, who I can't see on the big screen right now, but we had this moment where I asked a question. He was describing this opportunity or this option, and I made a comment, and he means larger than life. And it was actually all part of the vision around what this, what the cloud campus could offer. And I think, you know, this, it was developed to meet a need right now. And I think once we all get to a place where we can and really thoughtfully look at some of the things that we've put in place and the things that we've learned, I think we'll want to have those conversations about what that means. Or does it mean moving forward? And what it, and how, and cloud campus is probably one of many things that are, that have been created, that is born in creative minds on our team who care so much about kids and their families. So, it's a long-winded way of saying I agree, and I think there will be many things like that.
Yeah, and just, it'll be interesting to see whether, especially it's irrelevant at the secondary level but at the elementary level, whether there's a need to create an identity as the cloud campus versus I'm still a Middleton student, I'm still a Hawksview student, or I'm an elementary buddy. You know, because the, we've shuffled the cards this year anyway with all of that. So, do these students, at least for this year, have a, do we keep them in their old identity or do we put them into a new one? That's, those are all interesting questions.
I agree. There's Brady and everybody.
Any other questions for Tim on the elementary presentation or really any questions for, I think, anybody on any of the presentations tonight? If not, before I turn to public comment, I just wanted to say, I was tempted to make a smart aleck comment about your restful summer of contemplation and camping and all those sorts of things. And what I really wanted to comment on is, this is clearly the product of nonstop work since before school even really got out, understanding that we were going to likely be in a place, something like this, and in a world where the instructions change every day and the limitations change every day. And you almost get to the end of planning something and discover the next morning you have to tear it up and come up with something new. This is just a huge monumental amount of incredible work, and I, and I know the rest of the board all really, really appreciate what's gone into this and appreciate the flexibility that's yet to come. I, you know, I would, no one's ever done what we're all going to collectively try to do at the beginning of the school year. We don't know what it's going to look like in terms of coronavirus. We don't know what it's going to look like entirely in terms of education, everything else. And as many times as things have changed, I know they'll change again going forward. And I just appreciate the creativity and flexibility and hard work that you've all, that you've all shown. So, thank you. With that, I will ask Ms. Andreg if we have anybody who has presented any public comment.
Sorry about that. We have no public comments submitted.
And for me, and just a couple more thank yous to Christine and Brad Weiss, who make the magic happen for this hybrid model is just many thanks and good job, you guys. I don't know how you do it. It's impressive. Thank you.
Has anyone got anything else for the general good? I can't see if there are any board members sending up a flag, but I presume not. So, our next meeting is September 16th, and that concludes the board work session for this evening. Thank you.